Okay, we're going to come out of closed session and poll the board members on the following statement. Do the members of the board certify to the best of your knowledge that only public business exempted from open meeting requirements and disclosed in the closed session motion were discussed or considered in closed session?
Yes.
Okay, are there any motions coming out of closed session?
Mr. Chairman, the board brings forward a motion to adopt or to approve the adopted opioid resolution regarding the opioid litigation, which was brought forth by the county attorney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we will adjourn this meeting and move into a close, move into a work session regarding the fiscal year '24 budget. First up, and that's John, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have a couple items on this work session this morning. We're going to start with a budget update that I would like to go through with the board to tell you where you are and, or where I am anyway, in terms of proposing the budget and make a couple of proposals to you that I'd like feedback on, and then Sam will quickly review the CIP, and then when we close out budget, we'll talk about the utility scale solar development policy. So let me start with my presentation on the overall budget. Kim, if you could pull that up. Okay, so where we are at this point in the budget development, we know the budget for this year is going to be a sharp rise from FY '23, but a huge amount of that increase will come from capital improvements, and most significantly, we do have a placeholder number in the CIP for either renovation or replacement of the middle school, which we've just put in 68 million at this point. That would be a debt service type project, so you know, that really is to be determined, but whatever number we include in there has to be included in the total budget number, so.
Is that, or just to hold up real quick, that's a huge number.
Sure.
Is that random? Is it pulled out of air? How do we get to 68 million?
That was the schools number that they put in, Mr. Underwood, and I think that that is based on Spectrum Designs' estimate for a renovation, but again, it could be way overstated, could be way understated, we'll see.
If it's every 68 million, perhaps we ought to discuss it and know a little more before we pass something, say in 68 million.
Yeah, again, it's a placeholder, and it doesn't, I mean, I think we need to probably really strongly consider including it in the CIP in this budget year, but it may take longer than that to work through and determine what we're going to do, and the borrowing might not take place till next budget year, it's hard for me to know.
What's the proposed change? What was in our last CIP for one year out?
I'd have to, Sam, do you know?
Forty-five.
Yeah, I think that last, last year's CIP had forty, I think 48 million in this year.
To be, can I just say, being on that joint committee, the number was more like 53, 55, but there was a 15% contingency, and the replacement cost of that school at the time, based off of Spectrum's numbers, was closer, over 100 million, so, not including the land.
The replacement cost of that middle school is $100 million? Let's hire new consultants. That's the most insane thing I have ever heard. That school replacement is 100 million? What's that per square foot?
And before I support a $68 million renovation cost, I'm going to, we're going to have to go through an intense scoping of that school. I'm going to have to walk through, me personally, I'm sure others too, would want to walk through there with contractor after contractor before I can agree to a $68 million renovation for a building. That's.
Well, we're no, we're not here to make that decision, and by any means, we know there's a lot more study and discussion that has to take place as to whether we renovate or rebuild, or how much it's going to cost, but.
We could just keep it the same.
The current budget has, has a placeholder in there of that number. I'm open to any number or no number, it's really up to the board, but this was just an introduction of one of the reasons why your, your total budget number has the potential to go up by 100 million dollars.
I don't want to, without a lot more information, I don't want to buy or sign off on any study from somebody that says that the replacement cost of that middle school is 100 million dollars. So for now, I'm fine keeping the number that was in last year for this year, but making a change based on that insane study, uh, no.
You're suggesting we just move the 48 million or whatever was in last year into the current year?
So we get better information.
I, if that's a consensus, that, that helps me move forward.
I'm not sure that we should be looking at that. The, the number that was in there is back, it goes back, I'm going to say, three years, or maybe more, five years. So keeping that number in there, in view of what has happened with construction costs over the past few years, is probably as insane as putting in 100 million dollar replacement cost. I, I think we, this 68 million is not a solid figure, no one is saying that it is, but it's probably a more realistic figure than what we were looking at before.
But this is being put in our budget, not, I mean, it's our CIP, but this is actually being put in our budget right now. So for us to take something that literally, in this case, is going to be, what, 20% or more of the total budget, and to not have a thorough understanding of it, I think we need, we may have to work quickly, but we got to get a thorough understanding of what we're doing.
Well, I like to, I'm kind of on the opposite stage of Mr. Dur's one, because last three years, or three years ago, peak construction for materials cost and peak for labor. So with the interest rates going up to 7% or over, the outlook now is for those labor costs and material costs to come down. Maybe even, they're talking about a recession. So that may be a good time, if we wait for a while, to get more estimates on what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I have a challenge putting 68 million in the budget right now, because we're not talking CIP, we're talking budget.
Why don't we do 50?
Fine. I'm, I'm fine saying that, take the, whatever it was, 48, and adjust relative to what would be a construction index to adjust, that's okay.
Leave the, leave the contingency off of it, which was 15%.
15% of 53 million is 7.8 million, roughly?
It was 58 million, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was, it was in the 50s, plus the contingency.
If it was 15%, it was 53. I've not been at school for a while, but I think we'd still be in the, right at 60, not 68.
Well, understanding the concern here, I think, you know, we can go back and take a look, and I'll talk with our finance director and Dr. Bradson, make sure, A, we want it in the budget in this fiscal year, and if we do, to pick a number that's justified.
Yeah, but if we're putting it in the budget for this year, we really ought to be, I mean, planning quite a bit, because it's, yeah, it means we're planning on spending it.
Again, there, it would be debt funded, so there'd be a lot more board action and work to do before we'd be not only spending it, but even borrowing it, but.
First, we need to know what we're talking about. We don't even know what, whether we're talking about renovating, building.
And that, that would be the first recommendation, one way or the other, that will be coming forward for you all to figure out. So it'll be a process, for sure. The, one of the points of my mentioning that right here on the very first slide, though, was just to tell you that whatever we end up doing, the budget figure, as it continues to grow year over year, and we have a lot of salary and other expenses in this budget too, that are increasing, means that that percentage of your budget that should stay in the general fund, it becomes a bigger number over time. So just understand that while our general fund is, is very healthy and will remain so, that policy we have of keeping it between 10 and 15%, and we've been well over 15% at the end of this year, and I think I have another slide later on, we're, we're probably going to be under 15%, depending on what that school number ends up being. So that's just a, just a heads up, but still, no, no worries about the general fund, it'll be well within our policies and, and on the high end of that. I guess I sort of jumped ahead, that, that's, that's what I was just referring to, was our, our policy of 10 to 15% of the operational portion of the budget is, is what we need to keep our fund balance at, and currently, we would estimate that we will land at about 14.3%, so still healthy, well above the 10% minimum and just below the 15% range, so happy with the fund balances as we're planning to propose this budget. I talked to the board a little bit about the real estate reassessment. 27% is where it landed, which is obviously very substantial. That raises the value of a penny of real estate tax to over $800,000, and currently, the equalized rate, tax rate for real estate would be 44 cents. That's broken down by 37 cents for our general fund, and 7 cents for the fire and rescue levy, so 55 cent current rate, equalized rate, all the way down to 44. As I go through this, rest of this presentation, you'll see that my recommendation is going to be for 46 cents or 2 cents above equalization. This slide is just a, a little bit of a, more detail on that reassessment. Again, the number's over 27% in terms of overall increase in values. Residential was the, the hardest hit from that, at 29% increase. Commercial and agricultural were about 22% put together, that's where you get to that 27% on average. And again, the value of the penny is up a little less than $200,000 for each penny collected. Terms of the schools, I've been working closely with Dr. Bradson, and they have some difficult unknowns right now that may not be resolved anytime soon. The superintendent is basing his budget primarily on the governor's budget right now, along with some other factors, and Dr. Bradson's always done a good job of working with some unknowns and coming up with a budget that worked, even if he had to make adjustments down the road. So confident that whatever comes out of the House and Senate, hopefully, will be okay on the budget that the schools are discussing so far. And that budget would include state and federal funding of about 115 million dollars. The request currently from the county for local dollars would be about, just a little less than 1.3 million dollars more than it was last year, or about a 3.8% increase. To go through a little bit of that, in terms of where that money's coming from, some of the increases that are required are salaries, health insurance, some positions, some instruction and technology expenses. There won't be as many federal funds coming in this time from the ESAR, and the construction funds that we received as a one-time payment last year will, will not be there. Revenue-wise, the state increase, we, we think will be almost 4.8 million dollars, and again, the request to the county is going to be about 1.282. I want to talk to you a minute about our salary adjustment proposals. We, we have talked, and I have explained to the board in previous presentations, that based on our PMP, we use a three-year rolling average for the cost of living, which for this year calculates to 4.97% across all county departments. That carries a budget impact of about 1.2 million dollars. I've also let the board know that we have a pay and classification study nearing completion, and we do need some time to digest and look at that pay and classification study. But what I would tell you is that across the board, we'll have some needs to, to increase salaries. I don't think we're in terrible shape market-wise at all. And then we'll have some specific positions that, that will need some attention, and we will bring that through the personnel committee and to the board at some point as a series of recommendations. But right now, in order to, I think, lessen that pain, so to speak, and also in consideration of the fact that the state, depending on which budget you look at, may change their increases from 5% to 7%, leads me to think we might want to do more. It's a good year to do more, and Mr. Underwood, not to pin this on you, but you mentioned in a meeting, what if we did a two-year rolling average, since we know that next year's going to be even more painful based on a three-year rolling average? And so we did that calculation, and it came out to 6.75%. And I would like to propose to the board that we change that 4.97% cost of living to that 6.75% number. That is doable, at a cost of about 566,000 additional dollars, which is a little less than, or a little bit more than half of a penny.
I'm happy to take responsibility or blame, whichever way it's looked at for that, because, yes, there has been real inflation, and for us to adjust to looking at two-year rolling makes sense, but we ought to continue that going forward. So next year, that could end up going the other way, so.
Right.
But as we have increased volatility to go to a narrower rolling average, which would increase our budget this time, I do support.
So in terms of the tax rates, and, and based on, on what I just proposed, currently, the budget has no, no change to any of the personal property tax rates, and that includes the $3 rate for vehicles that we implemented last year as a reduction from $3.50. What I need to share with you today that's not on the slide is that Commissioner Revenue approached Ms. Lamb and I yesterday and indicated that it's looking like car values are self-regulating and coming down, and that our anticipated revenue at that $3 rate will be substantially less. Valerie and I believe we can still make that work okay at the $3 rate, but that $3 rate also sunsets, and unless the state makes a change, we'll have to go back up to 350 next year, so I'm just throwing out for the board, if, you know, you're going to get less revenue from that personal property tax from vehicles at $3 this year than you did last year. So if you want to step it up to 325 on your way back to 350, you can do that, or you can leave it alone, but I did want to make you aware of that situation.
Do we know how much? So you say there's an amount, do we know what the amount is?
Commissioner Revenue estimated it could be as much as $3 million less revenue.
On a base of what? What's our total vehicle revenue?
Valerie, do you have any idea what that is?
I only know, I only know what they bill out. When it comes in as a collection, it's all in one pot. I can tell you that for, let's see here.
So we're talking only the vehicle portion of this, and since we are billing them separately, I know it's got to be able to know what that figure is.
I have it in here, I promise. So for vehicles alone, for the book, the 2022 book that she just did, it's 21.7 million is what is strictly vehicles, falls under the VH category. Then you have the CY for motorcycles, and all the trucks and trailer categories as well.
Right, so, okay, 22, or 21.97, what was it the prior year?
18.5 million. Sorry, I hurt my glasses.
So the total value of vehicles is declining by, or of used vehi, well, no, all vehicles, used, new, everything is declining by 15, or more than 15%?
Well, I mean, because all I have is a total assessed value of 791 million dollars in vehicles.
Right.
Of that, we don't know how much is used or new, or.
But we still could, should be able to get that, because, I mean, we could go down to the vehicles. So to know, did people get rid of vehicles? Did they not buy new, or, I mean, it's just, 3 million is a big change on a base of 22. It may have happened, but.
That, she ran the book, yes, she said if they would have run the book yesterday, when she came over to, to meet with us, that that would have been the decline in vehicle revenue was 3 million.
Okay.
So.
I mean, to me, that makes sense, if you look at the value of used cars over the, to the COVID period, 2021, I mean, some used car prices were up 40%, 35 to 40%, and now you're talking about a 15% deduction coming back into reality, and things still aren't the way they should be with supply chain issues, so I mean, that, to me, that makes perfect sense.
And again, I, we, we do not believe you need to change this rate in order for me to deliver you a, a proposed budget that works with that 2 cents I talked about above equalization, but it's just something for you to think about in terms of, again, if you wanted to incrementally take it back up to 350, or you want to leave it alone, see what happens next year, I'm, we're okay either way.
I think, I think if there's any way we can keep it where it is, that we should keep it where it is, because it is some assistance for our citizens, and I think many of them need it right now, and I think it's important.
Yes, it's actually a significant tax cut for the citizens. I mean, we're cutting $3 million. And if you think about that, even relative to the real estate, that's almost 4 cents on real estate that we would be cutting. So it's just a big change, and I don't know that, I don't have enough information to know if that people just didn't buy cars, so therefore, they're in the increase, or, yeah, what's driving it.
We can certainly try to do some more analysis, but I, I primarily expected the board to, to indicate its desire to keep it at 3, if possible, and, and it is possible.
Great.
In terms, again, going back to the, the real estate rate, you know, the county will have some increases going towards salaries, health insurance, and a few new positions. If we go to the 6.75, 5% cost of living, we'll need about 400,000 more dollars than what the budget currently has in it, and then with the school request anticipated at 1,283,000, that's, that's where the 2 cents is coming from, about a half cent for the county, about one and a half cents for the schools.
I'd look at that slightly differently, because the schools' overall local increase is increasing 3.8%, if I remember correctly. And so if all other revenues were the same, then the school amount would, you wouldn't raise 2 cents, you would be raising 3.8% on our total basis, which would be less than a penny. So what's really happening is we are increasing the real estate tax rate to support a significant reduction in vehicle taxes. Now, that may be what we want to do, but that's what we're doing, because vehicle taxes are down 3 million, and we're saying we're going to increase real estate by 1.6 million, which, it's okay, we just, I'm not saying I'm against it, it's just, it's kind of what's happening.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fair. You know, the $3 million reduction in, in the personal property is, is being counteracted by, as you said, the real estate increase, plus there's some costs within, I think primarily buildings and ground stuff, that are capital-type investments that we, we have elected to take out of the general fund, as opposed to keeping in the operational budget, and that offsets some of that $3 million as well. That's where we stand right now. You know, again, we're looking at, if this goes forward, as, as it's currently developed, at, at 46 cents, 2 cents above equalization, that's still an extremely low property tax rate, in my opinion. I'm quite confident it'll remain the lowest around, and so I just offer up, you know, if the board has a taste to do more, I think some of the things we have needs for that are coming will be more debt service on future schools, and not in this year's budget, but we, we do have a line where we've set aside money for peak shaving debt service, and also fire and rescue equipment needs are always huge, so, you know, not, not that I'm expecting you to say we want to put even more pennies on the tax rate, but if you did, there are needs out there. Right now, the budget I intend to propose to you is, again, at 46 cents, barring any further direction from the board.
The real estate assessment is somewhat behind now, because, like I said earlier, with the increases in the rates to 7% and over, based on supply and demand, it's just catching up to where I think the real estate market values are going to come down. So I know there's not anything we can do about that, but if, instead of 29% up, very easily could be 20% down in six months to a year, but.
Look at all the new builds we got.
That's true, too. The tax base is increasing, new builds, new industrial, et cetera. That said, yes, I mean, we, the assessment has to be based on the value at December 31st of last year, so it is what it is.
I just want to be transparent about that, though. I mean, that's, because we're going to be hearing about that from our citizens.
Yes, and I'm, between 45 and 46 cents, I don't know, I see that we have the need, and we, we will be hearing about it. I will support advertising at 46, and based upon feedback, I'll see if I support 45 or 46 after the hearings.
That's all I had this morning, as far as my overall update. I appreciate the input and feedback, I think we're headed in the right direction. Sam is prepared to give you a, an overview of what's in the CIP, if you'd like to hear that this morning. Leave it up to the board.
Go, Sam.
Sam? All yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good afternoon. I'm going to grab that click, clicker right there, Sam.
I'm gonna grab that click, clicker right there, Sam. See, Kim, can you pull up that presentation? I'm sorry. Each year, the planning commission looks at the capital improvements program as required by the Code of Virginia. Planning commission did that in February. Each department head, various departments have weighed in their requests as they normally do each year. Our department kind of compiles those requests, we put it together in a format that hopefully is easy to digest. The county administrator and county finance director further vet that based on the current revenue projections, too. Just going to go over a quick, Mr. Chairman, just a quick overview of the various categories that you see in the C I P, and then looking at this most current upcoming fiscal year of '24, of what's expected or proposed in the, in the current draft. The airport, it's a small number, this year, 75,000. Buildings and grounds, and I'm going to go over those projects in details. I'll just go through the numbers real quick here, the requested numbers for this coming fiscal year, 560 total for buildings and grounds. Education, that's a big number that you all have just discussed, with the lion's share of that being the 68 million number that you heard for a potential middle school project. Grant matching funds, 100,000, no needs for I T this coming fiscal year. Parks and Rec at 5.825, with, again, the majority of that coming from the town in regards to the community pool project. Public safety at 6 million. Public Works, which is a landfill, in this case, 200,000. The roads, 5 million. Public water and sewer, 400,000 total there. Looking at your general fund proposed total as it currently stands now would be just shy of 17 million dollars. Your fund source from landfill fund would fund the proposed project there, 400,000, a potential debt-funded project. And then the other is primarily the town contribution for the pool. But that is a large grand total, but, again, the lion's share being a potential middle school project. Just kind of a two-year comparison. Last year, on the left there, FY '23, or this current year, FY '23, general fund of 14, with a total not better, not much better than 14. Much bigger this year with a potential debt funding project of a middle school, but just shy of 17. And then looking at, out to the FY '25, a little bit smaller number there. Skip through that. Just some of your revenue sources, general funds, about 20%. VDOT, we hope to apply for revenue sharing grant funds this year, and that would be, hopefully, a big chunk of that 5.6 at 5 million. And then middle school debt-funded project. These are kind of the details for this coming fiscal year, for the airport, some teehanger repairs. Buildings and grounds, Carver Center, additional money to make that roof project happen was needed because of increased costs for that project. A line item for security improvements at the courthouse, and that is more than one fiscal year. If you were to look at the whole C I P, there'd be another line item for the following two years, I believe. And then replace the roof on Galvaff Marshall Building, DHS is funding that through their operational savings. In the education category, beyond the middle school project, there is an additional $45,000 that's needed for tennis court renovations. Emerald Hill Elementary, some heat pump controls there, Pearl Sample Roof, top units, HVAC units, and then a potential line item there for a new entrance that is being discussed for another point of access for Pearl Sample and A.G. Richardson Complex there. And then some practice field improvements there, 200,000 at Culpeper High School. Stadium lighting, again, also at Culpeper High School, at 250. An ag department storage building at 180 for Eastern View. Some renovation at bus garage for Fuel Island, work at 90,000. And then future additional projects are the remaining turn-in money at 1.147 there. Musculaneous categories, which we've used for grant matching funds, is proposed at 100,000. Again, Parks and Rec at 5.825, with five and a half of that being the community pool project, 5 million coming from the town and reserved 500,000 from the county. The other project that you see there are potential parking improvements that are needed at Mountain Run Lake Park at 325,000. Under public safety, you see two familiar items there for Fire and Rescue Association, 800,000, and then additional capital projects at 200,000 for a total of a million. There is a new item, and that's the potential renovations if the county were to make things work at Coffee Wood for use of that facility there. Category, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just real quick with the Coffee Wood, do we have any agreement or anything?
Supervisor Underwood, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe so.
We, we do not, Mr. Underwood. I had, I had put that in as a placeholder some months back based on what we understood some of the needs to renovate that facility are, but it, right now...
I'd suggest we remove it till we have some idea that it's even a prospect. I'm not saying I don't support it, I'm just saying we have a placeholder for something we don't even have an agreement on.
That's, that's certainly fair, and we'll, we'll make your general fund 5 million dollars richer, so.
Under the roads category, public works, as I mentioned, there's a 5 million dollar, and this would be a potential 50% match share for some corridor improvements that we're currently working on with a consultant. Those applications are due this year, so fiscally planning for it is important to do this year as well. And that would be matched for up to 10 million dollars and beyond, actually, for revenue sharing projects over the next two fiscal years. And we did the same last year as well, so we have some money to work with there. Water and sewer needs for this coming fiscal year, additional money needed for the water supply route on 522 next to landfill, landfill fund will, is proposed to fund that. And then connecting some wells at the airpark water system, additional 200,000. And, Mr. Chairman, I went through that pretty quickly. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's in the draft plan that's moving forward.
Sam, I'm just going to go back to that, that Coffee Wood Correctional Facility. If this is a '24 budget, year '24 budget, a lot of things can happen between then and there. I'd rather keep that in there, should we be able to get that facility, regardless of the structure, how it's worked out. But we are in a situation right now, we're spending 2.9 million dollars a year in outside jail services, and I can't in good conscience sit here and just want to kind of push this thing under the rug. I, I say we keep it in there, and we continue to, to work with the state on getting the acquisition of that facility where we can start saving some money.
For fiscal '24, so we're talking beginning July 1st and going through June 30th of next year. At the pace that government moves, I, I think the odds are slim to none of us spending any money by June a year from now. Now, putting it in the year out, sure. So putting it in C I P for one year further out, okay.
I agree with you on the wheels of the, of the government, how slow they turn, but we've been working on this for three years, and...
That proves my point.
And again, and we were pretty close last fall, and, and there was some pickups. But, again, I'm pretty adamant about keeping it in there for, till the July of next year budget.
Okay, I'll agree with Mr. Bates on that one. I don't think we'll spend it, but I'll, it's not worth arguing over. It'll still be sitting there next year whether we do it or not. The much, much bigger thing is the middle school. We have a C I P plan where we're talking, not about further years out, we're talking about this coming year, 68 million, and we can't even say what we're talking about. So we need, the community needs to have a conversation on what we're going to do with the middle school, and it needed to happen in the past, but it certainly needs to happen right now because it's critical, it's going to increase our tax rate by probably 10% on real estate for the debt service alone, beginning, not in this year, but the year after, the year after that. And if we're really thinking about putting 68 million dollars into Culpeper Middle School where it's sitting right now, we need to let everyone know and see what they think about it.
I think Mr. Brad's superintendent of schools would like to say a few words, I believe. Sam, if you don't mind.
Sam, I may need your help. Thank you for your earlier action this, this morning about the appropriations of the funds that, from federal funds. And the reason those things happened were the product of having a C I P, a robust C I P, and I appreciate that process because part of being able to apply for those was that, quote unquote, "we were shovel-ready." We had those in our plans, whether they were outlined years, but we had those things in our plans so that we could get those funds and, and get 3 million dollars that you approved today that otherwise we wouldn't receive. So thank you for doing that earlier today. So the, the elephant in the room, and again, I'm not here today to talk about the merits of renovate or replace or whatever, but I, but I do want to have the opportunity to kind of set the record straight why this is here. Now, it's certainly your decision to put it in FY '24 or FY '25, but something needs to happen sooner rather than later based upon the rooftops that are going up and the enrollment projections that we're seeing growing. And I do appreciate the involvement of Mr. Bates and Mr. Dur on our joint capital planning committee, and they've, they've seen some of this, which they will in turn bring that back to you. But, but a few things, for example, the number that's in the C I P, and, Mr. Underwood, I know you're a numbers guy, and you saw the old number, leave the old number in there. Well, the old number wasn't the correct number for two reasons. For one, it was a 2017 number. We've had gobs of inflation since then. I don't think anybody up here would argue the inflation. But at that time, we lowballed that number based on just renovating the school, not adding capacity, okay? What we're proposing now, based on projection for middle school students, is also adding capacity there. So specifically, that building right now has a maximum capacity of 1166 right now. Now, maximum capacity is that you have kids in every spot and every place in the building all day long. Well, guess what? That doesn't happen in a school. Because of scheduling, you're going to have some open space at some point. So the operational capacity of that school is 1,020. And right now, in that school, we have 1,065 students. So we're in excess, we're over 100% of our operational capacity. So it would be not smart to look at growing that space as you look at a renovation. So the renovation number, not only is adjusting for inflation, it's adjusting for some new construction to get us up to, not overdoing it, but getting us up to a max capacity of 1412 over 1166 and getting us to an operational capacity of 1236. So I, I, that, I hope that explains why that number looks different. That number of 68 million is a 58 million dollar construction cost, and then another 10 million for contingencies and soft costs and those kinds of things, to include but not limited to architect fees and all those kinds of things. Those fees are borne out by year after year, state report, the, the V D O E keeps up with school constructions. And we can go out and look at a similar-placed middle school, similarly built in the timeframe. Right now, I'm seeing middle schools being built at 105 million dollars. So th- those things are real out there, so we've looked at that.
Dr. Bradz, let me interject just for a second.
Sure.
To go back on what I said earlier. If we agree to these, to, to look at appropriating these high costs, and we've scoped, and we think it's going to be 68 million dollars, are you saying 58 million dollars to refurbish the middle school potentially? Or that money set aside to go toward, to replace the middle school? But my thoughts are, if, if we agree to look at these numbers now, at this time, we would be going against every private sector developer out there right now that's involved with construction. Every smart developer out now, out there now is pausing on everything because they know that the costs for materials and labor are going to come down in the next six months to a year. So therefore, why do we want to entertain a, a big number like this now when, with interest rates at seven or over and going up, and many of the analysts are talking about recession, why are we even entertaining these high numbers now until, until we see what's going on the next six months to a year with the economy and with the, the labor costs and the material, materials costs? That's my question to you and to this board.
Because, so the, the renovation of that school has been in discussion since 2015, 2017, and now we have increased enrollment, and yes, if you want to pause it for a year, 18 months, that is absolutely your prerogative. But the builders and what they're holding off on isn't the same as what we're having to deal with, and that's increased student enrollment. So that's why it's out there. And again, placeholder is probably a, a bad word, but it's a placeholder. Nobody's saying this is what it's going to be, but as I said before, placeholders have served us very well to, to get the ball rolling. Now, I know it's, it's a little nervous that it's, it's here in FY '24. You got to have enough in the checkbook to cover FY '24, not necessarily. It's debt-funded. So you can go do that debt funding or not do that debt funding. That's absolutely, absolutely your call. But, but to be specific about this renovation, we're looking at different aspects of the school where we're looking at $156 a square foot for light renovation, $196 a square foot for minimum renovation, $250 a square foot for comprehensive renovation, and $350 a square foot for brand-new construction that will be a component of that school to increase the capacity. So we are diligently taking a look at all that stuff, so it's not pick a number, throw it at the wall, let it stick. We are looking at these numbers currently. If, if we don't like the numbers, we don't like the numbers, but the numbers are going to bear this out. So I just, I wanted to share that we have differentiated in the construction cost, square, price per square foot. Is, could that come down in another year? Do we hold on to another year? That's, that is what we, you all decide, yes. And I do appreciate, again, in these discussions, we've got a couple supervisors there seeing what we are presenting and where we're getting this information from. So it's, it's, it's coming upon us to, to do this sooner rather than later. Now, if that's not what the local builders and all those folks are saying because of what they're watching, I, I can't speak to that. I, I'm not a builder. I'm, I'm not a Realtor. I was told that one time, so it's all good. I'm, I'm just a humble school superintendent looking to either replace a building or renovate a building. The replacement cost at $350 a square foot for a 215,000 square foot building, it's a big building, to put approximately 1,500 middle schoolers in is going to cost us 86 billion, then another 15 million for soft costs and contingencies, not counting the land. So that's where the 101 million comes in. Those numbers are, are, are consistent with what's happening right now and what has been built because those reports go to Richmond. We can pull files. I, I brought in an article to our capital planning meeting, and Richmond High School went from 105 million to 140 million. And, and they pumped the brakes because what are they going to do? We are trying to work together and be transparent about it. I'm not, it's, it's one or the other. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's why that number is different. And if you don't want that number in '24, that's your call. Yes, sir.
The challenges that I have is I'm on the V D O E website, and I'm looking at all middle schools that were awarded in the latter half of 2022. There is one in Chesterfield County, contract award date September of 2022, maximum operating capacity of 1,916 students. Building cost, 71.5 million, brand-new building.
Yes, sir.
So that's 50% greater capacity, not a renovation, and they're saying it's 71 million.
And if, if you'll read the footnote, sir, that is just construction cost. That is not soft cost, that is not architect fees, and it's not land. It's just construction cost. And we, you know, we can do this all day long, and you have, you have the deciding factor, but we're bringing you relevant numbers, and you can disagree with the numbers and you want the numbers. But we're not bringing you something that's dishonest. You don't like the answer, and we are, we are comparing it to what the state is saying. But you do have to compare apples to apples.
I, well...
That's not the full cost of that building. Chesterfield, I know which one you're talking about.
And it is not the full cost. The full cost is 81.6 million. But still, 81.6 million for 50% greater capacity. That said... That said, what, I very much appreciate this presentation because this is the first time that I have heard any of these figures, and this is the first time that I've heard that we're leaning towards renovating the middle school. So, we may have a committee that goes and does this. I've not heard any of this. And so, I think for the community to know that we have two middle schools, as the crow flies, less than a mile away from each other, in a 243-square-mile county, and we're planning on renovating that school, which I can assure you, the residents of the Salem District do not support that. And as one member of the board, I don't support it either, but I think that this board needs to get much more involved if we're going to go spend 68 million, however we're going to spend it, or if it's 80 or whatever it is, and we need to figure out what's best for the community for the next 50 years, just as a board did back in 1967 when they constructed the current school in '69.
Well, the best absolute scenario I see is for the economy to go, to come back. Not in a recession, hopefully, but maybe close to a recession situation to where we can get these costs down 25% in the next two years. That's what I would like to see. And I think it's worth our while, whether we refurbish a middle school or replace a middle school. I think patience is important here before we step into a high-dollar construction cost for a facility where a year or two later, we may be able to get it for 25% less.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But that said, are we going to be able to stop the construction? Because the number-one thing that I hear in the county right now is what are we going to do with all these houses coming up? We're going to end up building, where are we going to put these kids for the school? And to be clear, okay, not just talking about the middle school, but the numbers that I've heard, we're going to be looking at probably two elementary schools, okay? And the $24 million a piece for that, which you could do 10 years ago, seven years ago, you're not doing it for that today. So, I agree, you know, wholeheartedly with your concept of moving these things throughout the county. But again, we are where we are, and these, we've got 310 houses going out of Laurel Street Extension. The houses at Clevenger's Corner are going up. It's 110 houses out there right now, and they are steady building. And to answer your question, do we hold up? Well, again, I don't know where we're going to plan on putting all these kids. In the meantime, waiting for the economy to come back down. And I will add that in 2016, when this conversation came up with the middle school, it was originally $37 million, and I was just about to lose my mind at that point. So, let's just keep kicking the can down the road and wonder why the price keeps going up, so.
Dr. Bradz, if we built a new school, wouldn't we still have to renovate the existing middle school too?
It would depend on what the school board and I would say the Joint Capital Planning Committee, and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors would say, what are we going to do with that asset? Because you have to, if you use it for something, take, you pick, another type of school, another type of program, offices, et cetera, et cetera, then you're going to have some, I would say, light renovation, not major and not new construction because the square foot is there. We all, with your support, have agreed to protect that asset by putting a roof on it, which, by the way, in rough times, was nearly a $6 million proposition, and we said no when our initial thought was that was going to be 2 million. We finally got a bid that was around 3 million, so that's still significantly higher than what we had originally thought. So, we're going to protect that asset. So, whether that protected asset, and it came up when we talked about approving the roof, whatever that building is going to be used for, we're protecting that building that was built in 1977 for future use in the school division. It can be used for other things if not for that. I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't stand here and say, I would love to recommend, and based on what we're getting with enrollment trends and the housing going up, the best location of a brand-new middle school. Absolutely would recommend that and repurposing what that school is to be there. Absolutely would do that. But I know that's going to be a larger price tag, so we're trying to come at it with the best of both worlds of renovate now because down the road, we're going to have to replace new. So, I'm not, I hope I'm answering your question, that we would use that building for something. I mean, it's.
So, I mean, my thing is, is if we got an $81 million new school, then our renovations is probably, I don't know, do we have a number?
I'm sorry.
Sixty-eight, so that's the sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
So, we're almost at $150 million. There's two schools. Just middle schools, not counting.
It's 200 more students out of a school population overall of, what, 8,300 roughly?
Yes, sir.
And so, to me, I agree with Mr. Bates. We need to be planning for the future, and I'm not sure 200 more students is enough. And because what, when do we anticipate being at operational capacity if we added 200 students to the middle school, based on our current growth trends?
At the next meeting, we hope to get some more information from a firm that's helping us with enrollment projections, looking at everything from what's happening, working with Sam, working with the town developers, feeding that information, looking at live births. We are looking at those trends to give as much data as possible of when that's going to possibly happen. Because you don't want to go spend this kind of money, and then as soon as you're done, you're at capacity. Totally get that. So, it's, we're, I won't say aiming low, but we're not aiming at, you know, an 1,800-people school. It's going to take a while for that in middle school numbers. But that's a balance that we're trying to work on, giving both our school board and you all updates on where that enrollment trend is going, population and enrollment trend.
One of the discussions.
I've got a question here, and maybe I should know the answer to this, but I do not. We're not, I don't hear anyone coming forward today saying, here is a concrete proposal, spend $68 million and renovate the school. That is not where we are. We are putting in a placeholder. So, John, could you explain to me just what a placeholder is and how it impacts our tax rate and our budget? Because this is debt money that won't be borrowed next year, I don't believe. And how does this come into play?
Okay, so first, you say that it's not going to be borrowed next year. If you'd clarify with that, what relative to our budget, gentlemen?
If we're not going to borrow it in the budget year, then it won't have an impact other than your total budget number. It's going to show in there for accounting purposes, but until you borrow the money, it doesn't have an impact.
Should we put 68 million in the budget if we're not planning on borrowing it?
If you're not planning on borrowing it, I would kick it out another year.
Thank you.
I would challenge that putting $68 million in the budget has accomplished a lot just here this morning by getting us to have this discussion. Because we need to have this discussion and move this forward.
Agree. I support the capital committee in terms of having the discussion sooner and moving it forward. What I'm saying is the discussion needs to be broader, and this has a big impact on the community. This is going to be the largest capital expenditure that we've done since Eastern View by quite a bit. And for the current location of the two middle schools is bad. So, considering that, and if we go forward, we need to look at very broadly, and then looking at the operational capacity. So, saying that right now, we have a total of, I don't know, roughly 1,700 students or whatever it may be, middle-school-wise, and if we're only going to be increasing that by 12%, given our current growth trends, does that make sense? So, perhaps we ought to be looking at a bigger operational capacity in the new school. And, but having a debate out in the open and figuring out what we're doing is very, very important. And so, I'm with you. I'm glad we're having the discussion now.
With that said, I just want to throw this out. When we talk about land cost for a new school, and we've looked at with their Clevenger's project up there, we have two sites up there for schools, okay? And please step in if I'm not correct on this, but those sites are going to require infrastructure, meaning water and sewer, and it's also going to require roads. We have sat right here and had our consultant tell us what it costs to build a road right now, and again, I was just about knocked out of this chair. So, when we look at $100 million for a new middle school, not including the property we'd have, well, in this case, we've already got it, but look at a road, look at the infrastructure cost to get water and sewer to it, that number's going to escalate quickly. And Dr. Bradz, you had brought up also that there was a hybrid model that we had talked about, a middle elementary, which was easily convertible or whatever, that may be an option going forward. And I agree with you on getting these schools spread out through the county. When we look at the time that these students are having a ride on the bus, you know, unfortunately, that's, the ones that are suffering from that are in the less densely populated areas of the county, in the southern part of the county. But again, going forward, I think it's a smart idea to move the schools out away from the central part.
Well, and I'll say one thing. I'm fine with set aside money that we're not going to be, it's not going to be affecting us from a hard, a hard-cost standpoint as far as entering into any contracts or into procurement. If it's a year or so, because I, like I said earlier, I like to see what the economy does and where those labor costs and material costs are, and be able to get some of this technology into the county from a revenue stream standpoint as well, which hopefully will happen in another year or two. So, but I'm all for the school, whether we refurbish, build a new one, and elementary school. We need a couple elementary schools. I agree with that. But in order, I think we need to defer on entering into any procurement facilitation, any contracts, and if it's, if we're just setting aside money, like Mr. Dur said and John was talking about, I'm all for that. One of the things that is happening right now, the school system has gone out and commissioned people to do some population studies so that we can look at five, 10 years down the road, I'm not sure what the horizon is, and come up with a plan of just how big the school should be, where the people are, ideally where the school should be placed. And in my mind, this placeholder is nothing more than putting this money in the budget for a plan that is evolving right now. And that plan may be bringing the bulldozers and knock the damn thing down and build a new one, or it may be renovate. We don't know the answer to that yet.
We've done several schools even while my brief time on the board. I mean, there's been Yale, there's been Eastern View, et cetera. Did we ever put the amount in the budget for the coming year without knowing what we were going to do? Did we ever have a placeholder in the history of this board, putting that amount in without knowing what we're going to do? I think I know the answer to that question.
Well, I think you put it in there without an understanding of what the exact number is going to be, but we've never had the sort of unknown of, is it a renovation or a new school?
Or even the square footage or the site, or I would argue that we've even had site plans before we put it in the budget in the past.
Is the 48,000 that's in there nailed that?
No, that's, future-year CIP, we have always done. So, future-year CIP, we always put placeholders. Current-year budget, we have never put placeholders. This is a whole new thing, and it's not been based upon a conversation with the community, having feedback. It's, apparently, we're still getting the data on however many students it would need to be, but it's in this coming year's budget. That seems crazy.
So, if the numbers were to come back, that it supported building a new school, or it supported, or we renovated that school, and we don't have that placeholder in the budget, what do we do at that point? And we're ready to get things rolling?
Sounds like we need to have more conversations very quickly.
Well, I agree with that.
So, I'm not, I'm with you. I'm not trying to delay. I'm thinking that we need to have much more involvement among all the stakeholders and consider what's occurring. Because I can tell you, for the people that are in Boston and Reva, if you're telling them that you're going to consign the next 20 to 30 years of those two schools being where they're located for middle schools, they don't support that, and I don't support it. And the same thing out in Richardsville, I'm pretty sure.
So, would they support the additional 40? And again, we're getting too far off into the weeds based on.
We're having a discussion on hypotheticals.
Yeah. Hypotheticals for this coming-year budget? How often do we have discussions on hypotheticals for 20% of this year's coming budget? I think we need to get some specifics. But I think we ought to get them soon. And in terms of the costs, I've been studying the VDOE stats for months and look forward to hearing several opinions on what should occur, and I think it may be important that this board look at it. I remember we had Weldon Cooper and all sorts of stuff 15 years ago when we were looking at population projections and school enrollment projections.
Weren't the school projections, I know there's a lot of construction going on now, but weren't the trends, one additional student per year a couple of years ago? I mean, it might have been three years ago.
One percent, sir, is that what you mean?
No, it was like one student more was the trend, or four students more. I don't know.
I think what Mr. Chairman deals referring to is the projected number of kids that are produced on each house, and I think it was Dr. Harmon, the discussions, I may be a little off on that, was 1.3 kids per household.
Okay, yes. That's part of the study as well, is to look at where our students are now currently and look at neighborhoods. And in those neighborhoods, at certain lot size, certain cost of those homes and those families, what's the projection of 1.5, 1.6, 2.1 children per household? And that we can project upon and make estimates where these new subdivisions are being and approved. I mean, frankly, I will stand here and tell you, some of the ones in the town, we have to go get the information on, they're approving those subdivisions that impact our schools, and we're trying to come at it after the fact. I will say this, this is difficult because we're trying to be proactive with some unknowns when the last time you had to do this, and I wasn't here, you did a great job, I think, because you had houses coming, you had the population boom, and you added Yale because you needed to add Yale because you were, we were bursting. And you had mobile units out to Wazoo at CCHS, and it was crystal clear, and you needed another high school, right? So, we can wait till we get to that point, but I don't have a sense of that. We don't want to get to that point. The problem is what, and the problem is where. And we're going to do our due diligence to give you where the kids are, and that way, you can help us say where we place it. Because logistically, you know, with transportation bus routes going all the way out to Clevenger's and having schools out there, that's difficult for us, not impossible. They need to be more centrally located. At CMS, probably too centrally located. But again, keep in mind, that has been, the placeholder notion of renovate was less expensive to get us some capacity. We may learn that it's not enough additional capacity. I thank you for saying that. And we may say, if the number's going to be that, well, then, heck, let's go new. Let's go new in a combo, because those elementary kids are coming too. They're going to come first, actually. So, somewhere, someplace, based on where these neighborhoods are coming in and being approved, that we put in an elementary-middle school combination together. So, and they, we haven't started putting mobile units for enrollment out there yet. We don't want that to happen. So, you know, this has been a great discussion, and what's caused the angst maybe is putting the 68 million in FY '24. I get that. But hey, it's triggered this conversation that we need to do something. Enrollment's coming, we're coming to another, another population slash enrollment boom, maybe not as much as the last time, and we want to be prepared for that. And appreciate the opportunity to present the information, appreciate the opportunity to work through the Joint Committee and have the Joint Committee share, we're happy to come and share to keep you in line with that. You know, you're not going to spend 68 million in one year, you're going to spend the debt service payment on that. You have to figure out that structure, right? You have to see where, what's your debt capacity. Those are not my question, you know, my problems to figure out. Those are your real problems to figure out, understand that. We want to get it right. We don't want to do something halfway because of cold pepper. We don't want to do something halfway because of Culpeper, guess what? We don't do it halfway. Look around. Together, we haven't done it halfway. UCTech as an example, not halfway. Everybody in the state's coming to see that, thanks to you. So we want to be that forward-thinking in the next thing with this growth, that hey, it made sense for this community to build something brand-new that, that's going to help us with elementary and middle school growth. Where is that? And it's probably not where we have a couple of lots right now. And that's not my decision, surely not, but it's probably not there. And that's where we need your help. Well, this makes sense, but where is it going to go? So I thank you for disrupting your work session.
Helping us work in the work session. Thank you.
Yes, work session, yes. Good conversation, so thank you. I, any, anything else, I'm happy to ask, and John's pulling at his tie and giving me the cut, so I get out of here.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the finance director a question real quick? So Valerie, I, obviously, if we were to borrow this money during the next year, it would probably just be an interest payment that we'd have to pay. But for accounting purposes, I guess you need to show the whole amount that's going to be borrowed, but let's say we get to, most of the way through FY twenty-four, or almost FY twenty-five, and we've figured this all out, and we're ready to borrow the money. Is there any reason why the board can't then take an action to amend the budget to do it at that time?
Absolutely, and as long as it's, if it's more than one percent of the total budget, then it requires a public hearing, then you would appropriate the money and, and move on.
So with that knowledge in mind, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable showing a placeholder in FY twenty-five. If that makes everybody, you know, a little bit more comfortable.
I still think we need to have more conversations. I mean, this is valuable.
Well, that's coming. There's no question that that's coming. The schools have that enrollment study being done, and the committee's planning on coming forward to have this conversation, and it's good we had it today.
Well, and that's another reason we need some technology in Culpeper. I mean, we, and we're, and we're working on that, because we did some calculations a year or two ago, to where if we need to build a new school, and we had a twenty-year term, and the debt load was fifty million dollars, I think the payments per year were like one point nine million, I believe.
That the debt was cheap.
Yeah, so it's more than that now, but that's why we need that revenue stream coming in, and hopefully we will have that coming in in the next year or two, so.
I had a couple of questions not related to the schools. So other places that I, I'm kind of concerned that we're just issuing a lot of money out of, one of them, Parks and Recs, three hundred and twenty-five thousand for parking improvements and five hundred thousand dollars for the pool. I don't remember any five hundred thousand dollar price tag to get the pool up and running from the county side of things.
Yeah, that's a, a, a good point, Ms. Gugino. When we built the original CIP several months back, that was my estimate based on Andrew's Based on what the consultant indicated and what the board authorized us to move forward with, it was under the five million. So, you know, I, it's good to have a cushion, but if you would like to take that number down to five million, which would be a hundred percent from other sources being the town, we can, we can do that. The other amount that you mentioned in terms of parking, I believe, was out at Mountain Run Park, which is desperate for some additional parking space. But five hundred thousand could, could come off of that pool project if that's the board's desire.
And the other thing, talking about long-term and assets to the county, I see a lot of activity at the Carver Center, and I one hundred percent support the agriculture stuff at the Carver Center and all the other things, the museum and everything that's there. However, what I'm missing is a strategic plan for the Carver Center. It's kind of, oh yeah, that sounds like a good idea, let's do that. Okay, oh, yeah, that might be a good idea too, let's do that. We kind of have this patchwork quilt of things going on at the Carver Center with no real long-term plan of where these five hundred thousand, million-dollar little price tags are going with new windows, new roof, renovating the insides, is it classrooms, is it offices? It's kind of just back and forth, and as you see the progression out, I don't have a sense of where that building is going, what its purpose serves, and how it's going to be utilized in the future. So I'd like for us to think about that and, and come up with a strategic plan of what we want that thing to be, which would also help with our transportation plan in trying to figure out whether or not that corridor needs to have any type of work adjusted to it, since there has been many complaints about ingress, egress, trying to get in and out, and the traffic pattern that's there. So I, I want to have a plan for that area instead of just what the next new big idea is.
I support the removing the five hundred thousand. We, Buildings and Grounds has worked on that. The amount includes a contingency, I think that we're going to be okay in terms of removing that. And a plan for the Carver Center, I mean, it has evolved, but it, that sounds like a great idea also.
Who's going to make the plan?
Buildings and Grounds. You're asking the question?
That's, that's your field.
Okay, anything else, John?
Not on budget or CIP, Mr. Chairman. We have one last item scheduled for the work session regarding utility scale solar.
Okay, let's, let's go with it.
Mr. Chairman, this was, as you know, we've adopted the, the policy and the ordinance now after many years of work, and there was some, some conversations I had with Supervisor Gugino about including a little bit further discussion on this, so I'm going to ask her to maybe kick, kick us off.
Yeah, so, um, everybody was happy that we finally have an ordinance, however, and still getting very consistent comments that there's still fears of solar sprawl and overdevelopment of some of the areas, especially within Stevensburg, having the transmission line. And also, while looking through the ordinance and the policy, I was under the impression that anything that went in the ordinance was going to be removed from the policy, whereas it looks like it's just duplicated, as well as some discrepancies. The height for the panels in the policy is twelve, in the ordinance, it's fourteen. And for setbacks, the policy says a hundred and fifty foot, where the ordinance says two hundred. So there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done in the policy to remove the discrepancies, as well as the duplication that's already in the ordinance. Sam, I don't know if that can be done just administratively, or what needs to be done there.
Yeah. And then one of the other things I wanted to kind of discuss was, in the policy, it goes, talks about an upper target of twenty-four hundred acres. To me, that sounds like a, a goal for expansion towards, rather than a limit of what our appetite is. So if we could refine-ness that in the policy. But one of the big things, and I'm looking for other alternatives too, is what do we want to do to restrict Project A being right next to Project B, being right next to Project C, and just having one project grow from three hundred acres to sixty-five hundred acres in a multitude of years? Because right now, the ordinance allows for that capacity. Granted, any board can deny every single one, but if you do have a board up here that's none of us, they could start migrating in that aspect, taking up the prime farmland, taking up even displacing residents and all that kind of stuff. So what is the board amenable to, to add, to prohibit that kind of sprawl?
Two miles, okay, two miles.
So there, yeah, some of them are, you can't have the, another project within two miles unless both projects are less than the current maximum project size. Some of them can say, okay, they just can't be on contiguous parcels, or some of them are even upwards to four miles, I think, or something like that. But some of them give that density structure, and some of them just say not contiguous.
I have two questions, or two comments. One, when we talk about the distance in between projects, that was one of the reasons I was opposed to having it in the ordinance, because in the policy, you left the decision to the board, and I fully understand what you're saying, future boards might not have the same outlook as what we had. But the second part of that would be, I guess, tasked to the county attorney, the legality of the term target number. I know the term cap or limit cannot be on any industry, but you can't do that. That's why I've said in the past, I hope that the ambition of the county putting that in the comprehensive plan is going to hold up in a court of law, that we, we've, we've reached our, our carbon footprint, or whatever you, calculations you use to come up with that number, we have gotten to that point, and now we want to continue to maintain, or we, we've added that part to the, to the green energy, the state's initiative. With the distance between the three hundred acres, if there's one parcel, or two parcels, or whatever the case may be, that would be the perfect fit when it comes to visibility, the quality of the soils, the location to power lines, I had rather us, in a sense, hurry and get to that target number, and that be the end of it.
But unfortunately, that target number, the developers are not going to care about.
Well, that's where I would pass the county attorney to kind of look into that and see in other jurisdictions, is this something that, that will, if you would, hold water? Is this something that'll work?
And the other thing what we have to look at is, these are all individual LLCs. The reason you do an LLC is because the increased liability that can come from these projects. These projects can be gone overnight. The companies can be gone overnight. And once this inflated bubble that the government has financially subsidized to agnostium pops, everybody, there's, there's not going to be any decommissioning money to be done, had. These companies are going to dissolve overnight, and everybody's going to be left with the industrial waste that they have. If they're not economically feasible on their own, they're being propped up by tax dollars. Do we want to allow our county to be overrun with these things, even if we do get to the twenty-four hundred acres? That bubble can still pop. And I'm very concerned with that.
I'm not going to disagree with your logic on that, but again, I can't make a, an educated or decision on something that I'm speculating on. And, and when you look at the initiatives now that are, that are being put forth to incentivize homeowners or businesses, and I'm going to go back to the CTEC building, that, you know, I was pretty skeptical at first, until I go out there, and every time I go out, I look at that board on how much that thing is putting out. So I don't think that we're, I don't think that the industry as a whole is that we're buying snake oil, if you would. I mean, I know it does work, so.
Oh, absolutely. I'm all for putting it on buildings and on people's houses, but the large industrial scale with Culpeper only having less than two hundred sunny days a year, it, to me, that's the skeptical part.
The, the decommissioning part of it, that fund should be, I mean, I would never approve a solar project without a decommissioning letter of credit, which is cash, that would be increased contingent on inflation every year, or every two years. So a decommissioning cost would have to be cash that's set aside with a letter of credit at least, and, and be inflated with inflation for twenty or thirty years until the end of the project, or I wouldn't, I would never be in support of a solar project.
But how would that stand up against bankruptcy?
It's cash, so it's held.
It's a third party that's holding.
It's a third party.
Okay. Because I thought they bulked it, the whole cash part. I mean, ultimately, I know most of the constituents in Stevensburg would love to see this only on industrial land and very limited farming applications and large landowner applications. And I mean, I'm right there with them. So I would like to see at least getting some kind of density thing so that these things can't be contiguous, whether it's in the comp plan, the policy, or the ordinance, and make this thing a little bit stronger.
We've just been through a, a very long period of time where we've discussed this. We've had a public hearing, we've heard all different sides, and, and I think we've come up with an ordinance that limits solar sprawl. I don't think there is anyone that wants to see the county covered in solar panels. But I think our ordinance is, is okay the way we approved it last month, and it, it may be, we need to clean up the, the rough spots, but, you know, the, the policy and the ordinance need to agree.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that it's time to go back and start reviewing it so soon.
Well, the challenge that, I mean, a motion was made, we did, had a lot of discussion, came up with an ordinance. That said, the ordinance does not limit solar, meaning that we had one application that then withdrew, that is now going to reapply in three hundred acre pieces, and all next to each other. If that's what we want and what we intended, okay. If that's not, those who don't want that are the reason that we're here discussing it again, I believe.
And to go with the three hundred acres, I mean, I, my logic behind the three hundred acres, if there's going to be an ENS failure, if there's going to be a, a situation where something does happen, I'd rather see it on three hundred acres than I had eighteen hundred. And not to say that three hundred acres, that's a lot of land I have in solar panels, but, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer that do the three hundred acres, if they come in here and, and they're good neighbors, and they've done what they said they're going to do, and you can't see it, it's not impacting, negatively impacting the, the community or the, the neighbors, I think there'll be less pushback going forward if it, in order to us, in order for us to get to the twenty-four hundred acres.
But I still feel like we're saying that a race to the twenty-four hundred acres is, we're going to make sure we have twenty-four hundred acres in, in Culpeper, because once one gets built, they're all coming, just like the data centers. We approved one, and we got six more on the way. Housing developments, once you let one in, the rest are going to see that. We already have North Ridge in the wings after Maroon. We went through Cricket and Greenwood, and, so I mean, it's not like we're going to slow roll to twenty-four hundred, they're going to try to get us there as fast as humanly possible. And that's my concern, is if we have one in one area, they're like, oh, that was a good area, so let's, let's try to just build off that one and get to that twenty-four hundred acres, and that's the concern I have.
But the purpose of our ordinance and our policy, I, I don't know that we want to dictate what you can do with your private land. The purpose of our policy and the ordinance was to set standards and rules around how this development would take place. I don't think we're, maybe we are, looking for rules that say it will not take place. But the ordinance says we have private land, as an owner, you can develop that land, and here are the procedures, you have to do that. I, I think we've, we've gotten there.
Because the original, back in twenty eighteen, whenever it was permitted to be used as a special use in agriculture, that was providing a new way to develop your land. A lot of other counties determined that that was going to be only on industrial land, that there wasn't going to be the special use, but we wanted to utilize that to help individual landowners, maybe keep farms and different things like that. Well, we found that blew up in our face, and that it's become industrial scale as big as you can get away with in each of the counties. And, and that's what I really want to protect against, to the fact that the purpose of the, what we did in twenty eighteen is not coming to fruition now. And I don't know if the economic benefits of allowing all of these large projects in outweigh the detriment to the area.
Well, I'll, I'll chime in on that, because I'm certainly beat down on this. And the one thing that has stuck with me is what Supervisor Underwood said the last time we met and we're discussing this, that, because I'm all about economic development and a revenue stream coming in, and he was right when he said that it's really not that much of an economic generator for the county. So for me, I mean, if we want to...
So, for me, I mean, if we want to cap it, not cap it, but put the mandate out to where it's three hundred acres only, and then you can't enhance that three hundred acres going forward to make it nine hundred acres, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm, it's, you know, the economic development part of it is, to me, is not a generator like a data center is in the right place for the county. So, you know, I, I'm fine with capping it at three hundred acres, like you're saying. Well, no, she's saying that she's concerned, she's concerned about the sprawl part to where a developer can come in and implement three hundred acres, and then two years later, assemble three hundred more acres on to that, which the ordinance and the policy doesn't cover that restriction.
So, just a hypothetical here, Gary, you have a farm and you've got a three hundred acre solar program going in. I have a piece of land adjacent to yours which matches everything that you have, and I have a project that is going to match everything that was done on your project. How can we then say that it was okay for you, but it's not okay for me? Shut up, what is?
That's, that's an arbitrary and capricious argument, and that's, that's, it could be a problem. It could be a big problem for that second land there for certain.
And that piece of land that you've got is the same marginal farmland or swamp or whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
I mean, the precedent has been set in other counties with their ordinances, too. A lot of them say that you can't have another project within a two-mile radius unless the projects are under that density of the two, three hundred acres, whatever's in their maximum project size. So, other county attorneys have nodded on those.
The problem where you're at, too, is, so you get two of them coming in at the same time. So, someone that does their paperwork a little bit quicker than the other one, fellow neighbor, who do you pick?
Yeah, which one do you choose?
Well, if they were smart, they would go together and do a fifty-fifty split and go one, get half the cost on the application. But, I mean, ultimately, do we want this to be something that is taking up pieces of our farms? Is it a big enough benefit to large landowners to go forward with it? I mean, Planning Commission didn't suggest going only industrial, but if we want to leave small fifty-acre allotments to large landowners in A1, maybe that is a better way to go. I just, I don't see the influx of applications stopping. They're just now all going to be three hundred acres.
So, what I'm hearing is pretty much this ordinance and this policy that we've got, we're going to just kind of throw this up in the air and we're going to start over. I mean, honestly, at Greenwood, when that was approved, if before that was approved, if the general consensus was, what I'm hearing now, it should have been a big red X that we don't want it in the county, I don't care where you put it, it's not coming here, and be done with it. I mean, we keep, you know, dilly-dallying around on how we're going to approach this thing. And again, I'm a firm believer in land use rights, and I think that if I pay the taxes on it, and it's whether the state says it's conditional use or the county says it's conditional use, and I'm not negatively impacting my neighbors, I should be able to do what I want about it. So, that's, that's my take on it, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that relative to the examples brought up by Mr. Durer is not what I think Ms. Gugino was concerned about. My way of thinking about this is relative to what the board's done thus far, if we have somebody come in here that asks for a three hundred acre solar panel facility, and we approve that, and say they own another thousand acres there, and they come in for another three, it's up to this board and at this board's discretion as to whether or not they get another three. Because under our policy, we say they're three hundred. I understand the viewpoints of wanting to have them not put together, because I can tell you one thing, when you start putting a bunch of impervious cover together, you're going to have a big effect on things that you're not going to want to mess with. You're going to have more severe storms, especially if you line them up along the river, because those storms follow the rivers. But relative, and there's been comments made here about relative to whether it's prime or whether it's marginal farmland, whatever it is, there are a lot of different ways to produce electricity, whole lot. There's only one resource for producing food and fiber, and that's land. So, I think that as we move forward and as everybody from whatever level of government they're in moves forward, they need to realize that with other avenues to produce electricity, you best not be using your only resource to be able to feed people. So, from my viewpoint, we, you can talk about, you know, Class A land or prime agricultural land. I don't care whether the land is prime or whether it's not. If it's productive agricultural land, then it's worth something to not just the people in this county, but the Commonwealth and the whole damn nation. Because if you look at the amount of farmland that's being lost every year, and it's over a mile wide strip from the east to the west coast, and I saw the figure not too long ago, and I can't remember it, so I'm not going to repeat it and not be right, but it will knock your socks off, the amount of agricultural land that's being lost to development of every kind, residential, commercial, industrial, or solar farms. So, I think that we've got a starting point with this, and I understand the concerns that Ms. Gugino has, and I think that we should ask staff to go look and straighten out the discrepancies that are here, that, between the, between the policy and the ordinance. And I wouldn't discount further discussion about what we want to do with these things. I mean, I don't think anybody sitting on this board wants to see us become a mega solar farm county. I mean, it's not in the cards as far as I can see it, from my perspective and certainly my decision-making process, but I'm only one of seven here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What does that mean? What does that mean we're doing next?
So, step one is definitely deconflicting the policy and the current ordinance. Oh, the first one is definitely to deconflict the solar ordinance and the policy, because that definitely needs cleaned up. But I would like, I personally would like to have the planning, I don't know if it's Planning Commission or if we run this through Rules Committee or where we need to run it through, but to determine if we, if the decision that we made in 2018 to allow this on farmland is still the decision we want today. There's only two people on this board that were there then. We've all changed. So, is that still the same dynamic, knowing what we know now that we didn't know in 2018? Do we really want to see these three hundred still massive amount solar farms in Culpeper?
I was just going to say, we don't need committees. We can go ahead and poll and see what the answer is, but I'm fine either way. So, the question is, do we reopen this or do we not? And maybe getting a sense of the board, we all agree with cleaning up the policy relative to the ordinance, I believe. But then, do we reopen this or do we see what happens before we reopen it? Maybe it's what we need to decide. Is there a will of this board to reopen it?
I think so.
You're fine reopening?
So, the waiting part, so if we, with the Greenwood facility, there was, I had heard talk that they weren't going to meet some deadline, and Sam, I don't know if you can answer to this or not, but any, my point being, do we want to start making a huge change on something? And I'm fine either way. If the county says, you know what, that's it, we're going to, whatever we do, how is that going to impact the Greenwood facility? Or is it something that we, if the Greenwood facility is going to not come to fruition, at that point, make the decision.
So, right now, from the looks of it, they're going to get an extension until 2025. However, it's also on the market to be sold, because that, that, what that permit allowed for is outdated technology now. So, the fact that they weren't even getting close to the hundred and fifty megawatts that Maroon was on twice the acreage just shows you how quickly the technology is moving and how much that they can produce more with less land. So, that is another thing on waiting. We get better quality materials, the same megawatts on less land, and who knows if Greenwood will ever get off the ground.
I do not hear people wanting to, I did not hear four saying do something now. So, it is what it is. Doesn't mean everybody seems, or not everybody, a majority seems to be willing to consider it in the future, but wanting to take a break. If that's what it is, that's where we are. Let's go outside where it's sunny.
All right. And Supervisor Rosenberg said the same thing, so I guess we have consensus on that. All right, John, you have anything else?
No, sir, I don't, thank you.
Okay. entertain a motion to adjourn. We adjourn.